We will now reconvene our city council meeting for the evening of May 7th. Roll call, please. Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Potem Dirk Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Any action to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda, one labor negotiations item and one item of existing litigation. The city council discussed those two items and received a report from staff, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Did Reverend Jane Quant slip in? I thought I saw you slip in. Please arise and join me for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi. I thought it was 7:00. Sorry. My apologies. Let us pray. O God, whose power is the power of love, we gather here tonight as people who care about our beloved city of Lompoc, knowing that difficult decisions often lay ahead, is so easy to complain and criticize, hard to govern, and yet we know that good governance comes when people on both sides of the Diaz open their hearts and minds for the thoughts and experiences of others, even those with whom we disagree. And so tonight, we pray that we might speak and listen with respect to those who are our sister and brother Lompokians. May your spirit of compassion, patience, and wisdom be poured out upon us and show us a way when we think we've hit a dead end. Overcome whatever is holding us back from being that city on a hill, that city which in which justice and mercy and compassion and righteousness shine like a beacon of hope in this world. Reveal to us what it will take for us to be a community that embraces all its citizens, from the best and the brightest, the powerful and the pride, to the last and the least, the lost and the little. Help us to believe that it's possible, that your light might shine even here, even tonight, even in this room. Dear God, may it be so. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I now have two presentations to make, so I will step over to the podium. Before I begin reading, can everyone here in the back, is the volume good?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, the first proclamation is for the Building Safety Month. One of the responsibilities we have as a city is to make sure that the environment you live and work in is properly built and follows certain rules. So, this is Building Safety Month. So whereas the city of Lompoc is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. Whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by a national voluntary consensus codes and standards developing organization, our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely-adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the world. Whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes, which according to FEMA commissioned study by the National Institute of Building Sciences provides $11 in future mitigation benefits for every dollar invested. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of public safety, are local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. And whereas "No Code, No Confidence," the theme for Building Safety Month 2019, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure the safety of our built environment and recognizes that the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and businesses. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor for the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join our community in participating in the Building Safety Month activities. Our building safety manager is actually out due to surgery, so we are presenting it to our city manager on his behalf. I forgot to have him come up. And it is a really important tool that we utilize to make sure your community is up to code, your homes are safe, the buildings and the restaurants and the retail locations you visit are safe, and then just ultimately the locations you work at, because many of us in this community are part of that industry and that those environments you're working in are safe. So, thank you, and I know that the department works really hard, that it's short-staffed, but is doing its best to bring our community up to code where it needs it and to be on top of the code where we are starting out in the right foot. And now if I can have a representative from the police department. So this is the May 15th, 2019 Peace Officer Memorial Day and May 12th through the May 18th Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which the date falls as Police Week. And whereas on Peace Officer Memorial Day and during Police Week, we acknowledge the incredible service and sacrifices law enforcement personnel make each day. The brave men and women of our city's law enforcement work long hours, often in dangerous situations, to protect our lives, liberty, and property. And whereas the safety and health of our officers must be a priority for all Americans, every day members of law enforcement risk their lives and service to those they have pledged to protect and defend, we must not take their devotion to duty for granted. And whereas we also take this opportunity to pay tribute to law enforcement personnel who have been killed in the line of duty nationally, a total of 144 officers were killed in the line of duty last year. And whereas the work of law enforcement officers is essential to preserving peace in our communities and to ensuring the safety of precious lives and personal property. Now, therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby call upon the citizens of Lompoc to observe Peace Officer Memorial Day on May 15th, 2019, and the week in which it falls as Police Week, May 12th through May 18th, 2019, to recognize and appreciate the vital role that City of Lompoc's hard-working law enforcement officers play in keeping our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is a short one tonight. I just want to take the moment here so I don't forget, and that is, we do need to pull, and I'll mention it again at the consent, but we do need to pull Item 7 on the consent as we received today a change from the county in the contract that was in the package. It's a minor change, but we'd rather pull it now, bring it back at the next council meeting, and have it all done in a proper manner. So, we do need to pull Item 7. The other one, as we continue to move forward on the budget discussions, I'd like to propose that next Wednesday, May 15th, at 6:30 p.m. here in the chambers, be the next budget workshop. I would like to just get a simple agreement from the council, sort of a nod or a raise of hands if that works for everybody.
So far, I've seen three, four.
Okay, so we'll work forward, or work towards getting all of that prepped and go through another one. We'll be doing, top level, we'll be just, you know, presenting some different ideas that have come from the council. I've asked our city attorney, Jeff Mavi, to give an update on, what's a general tax, a specific, a special tax, I keep saying it wrong, some of the background of where we are and trying to come to a conclusion, if possible.
So I do have a question for you. I know that there has been news reports, as of yesterday, about the return in the riverbed of individuals, and I know that we are short-staffed and trying to be proactive on that. Could you just give us a bit of a report on what was found and how we're trying to address that issue, given the investment we made?
Actually, if I can turn that over to Chief Mariani. He has more in-depth firsthand knowledge on that one.
So yesterday, there was a report of the state of the riverbed. KCOY did a story or feature on our operation. We had a detail put together, we had planned for several weeks, to go in and do an assessment, and we've received numerous complaints. If you look at the app, for those of you who have the app, it's ongoing, where people are saying that they're starting to see activity again, and people were, once again, living back in the riverbed. So we went out there and we did an assessment. We arrested four individuals, and as a result of that, we found numerous camps and debris again. So, that's pretty much what you saw on the news. It's pretty accurate.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you being proactive in responding to the apps and the reports that you were receiving, and again, it's a priority, having invested half a million by the council to reduce that impact. So keep us informed as to what you need and how we can be proactive to respond to that.
Yeah, we did this as an overtime detail, and so we got some officers who, once again, volunteered and came in on days off and worked. But it's really important, and we've mentioned this all along, that it wasn't just a one-operation venture. We knew that doing this, in order to sustain it, we would have to monitor and go in there quite regularly, because if not, people were going to go back and, once again, re-inhabit the riverbed area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby?
I was wondering if the city manager could comment on the, I guess you went to an economic forecast meeting earlier today, if you could comment on something that you learned there?
Yes, that's actually, I should have done that. So we attended that, myself, staff, I think some of the council, and it was, I'll be blunt, it was a little geared more towards Santa Maria than it did on, it was North County, but it was a little more focused up there. But it just was still, you know, a favorable picture. The, Peter Rupert says he doesn't like to forecast, which I understand, because with economists, that sometimes is a guess. But there's no indications, nothing out there that says the economy is going to stop tomorrow or we're going to hit a recession tomorrow. It's continuing to show favorable signs. It doesn't mean it'll go another 10 years, because we've already hit our 10-year, we've hit the historic growth so far, but there's nothing out there to say it won't go another 10 years. So it's, as it gets past this, I get a little nervous, because you now are into historic territory, and how long will this ride take us? It ended up with a panel discussion about, and the topic was how to grow a city. So it was meaningful to me, and I think others, how do you grow a city? And at the end, the panel discussion, they sat down and had a moderator that threw out different ideas. It was not as pleasant when I saw Lompoc sort of at the bottom on different scales. I'd rather see us in the middle to the top. But I think the big elephant in the room is still the ability for any city to push out its boundaries with, they mentioned Santa Maria by 2050 has to be able to take an additional 34,000 residents, so that's a large growth. We wouldn't be far behind that, and we're behind what we should be right now. So I think the growth issue was well-discussed. I think there is still that elephant in the room about our regional LAFCO agency, and how do we get past that restriction that we've had been, that's been placed upon us at this time. But we are working towards that. We have our May 15th response to their policy changes. We've been working on that one. We hope to have that done by the end of the week. That'll discuss some of their changes that will be pushing for additional preservation of prime agricultural land. And so our responses are also that the actual tenant, the beginning, the declaration of the Cortezy-Knox-Hertzberger Act really is designed to have planned, reasonable growth that is not leapfrogging, you're not doing strip annexations, and it hits the social, fiscal, governmental services that are necessary for a well-run city. So we're going to be working on that, too. So I think today's economic update partners well with what we have to then reply back to LAFCO.
Any other questions, requests from city manager? Okay, thank you. As mentioned, we will be pulling Item 7 from the consent calendar, and we will be opening up comment on consent calendar items, maximum of three minutes. All items listed on a consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. I'll now open the floor for public comment.
My understanding is this covers the entire consent calendar?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm Walt Fassold. I'm the current president of the Board of Directors of the Mission Hills Community Service District. We look forward to the Burton Ranch development moving forward and our district providing water and sewer services to that development. The city and the district entered into an annexation agreement on or about May 2nd of the year 2000. That agreement provides that the district shall have sole jurisdiction over the provision of water and sewer services and shall be entitled to all fees and charges associated therewith. This provision is clear and unequivocal. The EAR analyzed that the water and the wastewater services would be provided by the district. The new entitlement documents as being on Agenda Item Number 2 tonight, which is the extension of the development agreement, opens up the possibility, in theory, that the developer could choose a different service provider. In addition to being contrary to the LAFCO annexation agreement between the city and the district, the addendum to the EIR does not analyze the potential of this alternate service provider, which is required by SEQA. SEQA requires that the providers be identified and the capability and impacts of these potential providers be thoroughly analyzed in all matters regarding service capability, infrastructure requirements, impact of construction, of related capital projects, et cetera. This simply has not been done. The district stands ready and able to provide water and sewer services to the Burton Ranch development. We value the longstanding, good-working relationship between the district and the city. However, if the district, I'm sorry, however, the district will protect its rights if forced to do so. I just want to emphasize "forced" because we don't choose to do that, but if our rights are in jeopardy, we will be forced to protect those rights. We hope this issue can be settled in an amicable manner. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, oh.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Derek Hanson. I am with the Tobes Group and part of the Burton Ranch team. Here tonight to thank you for your previous support and hope for your continued support with the adoption of the resolution to extend our development agreement. Essentially, we stand ready to bring homes to Lompoc. It's been a long time, and we're hopeful to get through these issues. We have been in discussions with Mr. Fassold and Mission Hills Community Service District, but as with every conversation in all of our lives, whether it's buying a car or even going to the grocery store, you certainly make sure that you are provided what you paid for, and that is a process we're going through. And we're happy to explain any of the situations that Mr. Fassold brought up. We're happy to address those as we go through the process and make sure that everyone is comfortable and understanding of what our intentions are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on consent calendar? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Is there, Councilmember Mosby?
I was wondering if either Mario Guerra or the city manager could comment on Item Number 6 and what's, just quickly, without pulling it off, on what we're looking forward to, what you're anticipating?
Mayor and Councilmember Mosby, if I could?
Yes.
Go ahead. While Mario is walking up there, I just would like to state for the record, with regard to Item Number 2, that there was an allegation made by the public that the project is somehow being changed in some way such that additional SEQA analysis is required. I wanted to remind the council that all Item Number 2 is doing is extending the time of the approvals for the Burton Ranch development project and is not changing the project in any other way other than extending the time. So I don't see how additional SEQA might be necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Guerra?
Thank you. Just wanted to give a brief overview for the Prop 68 statewide park grant, if you have any specific questions. But just an overview, we are going to focus on two of the five eligible parks. The two parks that we will focus on for this first round is John Manville Park and Pioneer Park. Both of those parks, well, our statewide Prop 68 is to provide funding for underprivileged areas of the community and also acreage of parkland. So if there's less than the three acres per thousand in an area in town, it qualifies for these funds. The minimum, the grant funds, is 200,000, and the maximum is 8.5 million per grant. One of the, the great things about this grant is that there's no matching funds, so you really don't see that that often in the grant aspect, so we're real excited about that. It's a great opportunity for all the cities and counties statewide to provide. This round, well, total round in the Prop 68, there's over 250 million that will be awarded, and they are competitive, the grants. Each one of our grants, or any grants, are, they're scored on an individual type of basis, so they're not the community. So potentially Pioneer and the JM Park could be up to four or five million, depending on the scope of the project. One of the, one of the criteria is then that we need to engage the community for these projects. So we will be rolling out five, the community meetings, public hearings per park, so that will be coming out soon. So I just wanted to get the word on that, that the grant is due by August 5th, so it's going to be a pretty, a pretty fast process. So if there's any specific questions, then we'd be more than happy to answer.
I just wanted to thank you for that quick one and the announcement out there. I appreciate you guys looking into the Prop 68 and look forward to succeeding, I hope. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova?
I just have a quick question. The staff report says that we are actually eligible for five parks, but we're doing two due to staff limitations. How much more, or how harder, how much harder would it be to submit for all of them as opposed to two? I mean, I would think that after we write the first two, I don't know, you know?
The other parks that qualify, Ryan Park, Centennial Park, and Thompson Park, and Thompson Park's already been renovated, so it'd be Ryan Park and Centennial. The reason then that we chose Pioneer and the JM, because they're more renovations, kind of similar to Thompson Park. The Ryan Park project would be more of a bigger scope type of element that we could possibly shift things or what the community would want, council would want, and get feedback on that. But the JM and Pioneer are pretty much renovation of turf, fence line, the playgrounds, the gazebos, so that those are pretty straightforward. Ryan Park's a little bit more complex, so we didn't want to kind of rush that by August 5th, but there will be another round, two Prop 68, so then that's when we can apply for those other two parks. And for some reason, if we're not awarded for the JM and Pioneer, we can resubmit those at that time and make our bid a little bit more competitive, once we get that feedback back from the grant.
And if I believe from the report, you also stated that there's a mandate associated with it that our ability to maintain those parks for 30 years after receiving the funds also exists.
Yes.
So that plays into the impact of choosing a park and how our ability to currently budget to maintain for 30 years.
True.
Okay.
Mayor, may I add one other thing, is Mario had said with the outreach, we really need the citizens to be involved. We'll get points, you know, if one person shows up, it doesn't look well for our grant. So when these notices come out, we really do need as many people as possible to come out and listen to what the plan will be, and then we'll actually, we have to write your names down and stuff, so we can turn that in, because that gives us points towards the grant. And again, as he said, also with Ryan Park, it is, it's almost like having a master plan in Ryan Park, because it is an older park and there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be redone. So if you're going to redo the infrastructure, you know, do you want the stage in the same place? Do you want the walkway in the same? You know, we need to really discuss that more than just go through, as Mario said, and just renovating certain areas. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll make sure and announce to the public as early and often as possible for each of those meetings, so that we encourage participation and get that advantage to hopefully getting those grants. Thank you, Mario.
I have one more thing.
Oh, Councilmember Vega?
Mario, we have Westvale Park out there that's also within that envelope. I know it's out of sight, out of mind, within that housing district, but it makes sense that if we apply to renovate more parks that fall within that three-acre envelope, that you would have more of a chance. Now, the, we have an existing Parks Foundation that, even though we spoke about creating another nonprofit or Parks Foundation, we have an existing Parks Foundation that I think would probably be beneficial to us being able to prove the maintenance end of it also, because just like the renovation at Thompson Park, it involved the community members and the volunteer members as far as maintenance and the rebuild of that, and that park looks beautiful now. Thank you.
If there are no more questions on Item 1 through 6, I will entertain a motion to accept consent calendar. Councilmember Vega?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept consent calendar.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote, please vote. And consent calendar of item one through six passes 5-0. Seeing no staff presentation, announcement, or request, we'll move on to oral communications. Oral communications are on any subject matter that is the city's responsibility for three minutes. It is now open. Please step to the microphone and queue up if you have comments you'd like to make.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. Thank you for the excellent budget analysis from city staff and some of our elected officials. The path we are on is not sustainable and the trend is accelerating. State government overreach is bankrupting cities and citizens. Calpers performed a bait and switch, promising an increase would not require additional tax revenue. Make them eat it. Get an attorney. Both Calsters and Calpers rolled back their investment targets this year, which will result in government agencies paying significantly more to cover liabilities. Calpers went to China to recruit Mr. Meng to invest our tax dollars in Chinese stocks. Senate Bill 50 alters local zoning rules. More overreach from Sacramento. The template they're using is a mirror of the ideal communist city, which you can review online. Calsters and Calpers' investments were so bad Morgan Stanley had to pay back $150 million, of which Becerra's office kept 20 million. Sacramento reclassified serial arson from violent to a nonviolent crime. Perhaps relatedly, PG&E will cut power to fire-prone areas for as long as five days in high winds. Think of Venezuela. Assembly Bill 392 puts officers at risk, restricting use of force only when no other alternatives exist. Hard to determine in a half second. Assembly Bill 857 would authorize local governments to create their own banks to fund progressive projects, but shun loans to projects such as oil drilling or gun manufacturing. Rather than build proposed water storage projects, Sacramento chose to ration water usage instead. Overregulation prices most Californians out of the housing market. California's shrinking middle class is a threat to stability. Sacramento overreach has led to homelessness, poverty, debt, underdevelopment, and violent crime. Young families and small businesses, the backbone of our economy, are driven out. Balance the budget of this small town by giving Sacramento the boot. Get a lawyer. Don't raise taxes. Plot a sustainable course for our town to cover our responsibilities and dial back the state's intrusion into our finances, liberty, and freedom. Declare waivers from Sacramento overreach. Start from scratch. Provide for services and pensions absent the state law stranglehold. Don't raise taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Charles Blair. I, Dr. Charles Blair, I live in Vanderburgh Village, and although I don't, I don't vote in Lompoc things, but I really want to consider the budget. And since I do a lot of my shopping and medical care with the isn't of the hospital and utilized services, I'm concerned about the public safety areas and I, I, and again, since I purchase things in Lompoc, I'm perfectly willing to pay a little extra on when I purchase things in town here. And so when it comes to your budget, seriously, I would seriously ask you to consider increasing the taxation. The city of Guadalupe and city of Santa Maria actually allowed the citizens to vote. Again, my thing is let, please let Lompoc vote.
Thank you. I need you to not clap, cheer. If you want to silently show support and wave your hands, that is appropriate, but cheering and clapping or the negative is inappropriate, so thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Bill Mullins, who are old citizens and resident of Lompoc. The first item I'd like to talk about is annexation of Mission Hills. It seems like the citizens of Mission Hills come to our council meeting, each and every one, and tell us how to run our council, and if they want to be a part of it, they should annex and let them vote. Second thing, the vote. I agree with the council when they say that a sales tax will be an impact on the poor people. That is absolutely true. It will adversely impact them. But that's not the answer. Will it be better if, for all community, if we have a sales tax increase? So you can't just say that it's going to impact the poor and it impacts all of us. So you got to weigh the good with the bad, and I hope you do that wisely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council members, I wrote on April 22nd, and this is my follow-up, this is my follow-up to it. When I wrote to you regarding the 1% sales tax increase, I didn't know I had opened a hornet's nest. I received a call from a council member telling me we did not need money for a sales tax increase. Excuse me. Well, that got my inquisitive mind to call on the police and fire chiefs for their answer. Do they need money to run their departments efficiently? Both let it be known, yes, they need money. Some of their equipment that should have been retired at 15 years are still in use for 18 years. And staff in both departments are understaffed. With the illegal immigration coming into our sanctuary state and shootings, do you feel safe going out at night? We deserve better. The citizens of Lompoc, especially homeowners, should have the choice of a 1% sales tax increase as they, the homeowners, when there is a deficit, are the ones to see their property tax bill, bill the added burden that they have been hit with. Property owners get the brunt when there is a deficit and the city needs income. The property owner not only pays regular property tax, but are burdened with hospital bond, Lompoc Unified School bond, Allen Hancock, fixed charges for the pool and park and flood zone. Some of these bonds go back to 2002, 2005, and 2006. I pay an extra $346.37. With an increase in sales tax, it's picked up by all who shop in Lompoc, whether a homeowner, tenant, homeless, or tourism. We all contribute. We all benefit from the services supplied. Lompoc has the lowest sales tax compared to other cities. Let the citizens get the right to vote and not be dictated by city council members who have made their decision for us. This is not democracy. This is dictatorship. Put the measure on the ballot and let us decide. I have been a resident for 38 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Janet Blevins. I'm a resident of the city of Lompoc, and I believe that the public deserves the right to vote on whether or not we want to pay an additional 1% sales tax that would provide much-needed funds for services that are vital to the health and safety of our community. The services are vital to our health and safety, and I would like to know what person is going to want to come buy a $500,000 house in our community when they know that our police is not, our police department is not fully staffed and our fire department is not fully staffed? And we don't have the graffiti abatement program that we used to have? And we have a council member who is urging young people to illegally enter the riverbed and drive their vehicles around and then even have target practice? Please, that, that statement at the budget hearing last month deserves censure, I believe. I witness scary driving from teenagers in this city every day. They drag race off of the stop signs. They think they're going to live forever, forever, as, as we used to think when we were young. And there are not, we don't have traffic police to help us with this problem. We have more traffic accidents and serious accidents than, than we used to have, and it's a, it's a terrible, terrible, serious situation. And your sworn duty is to protect the health and safety of this community, and that includes having a fully-staffed fire department and a fully-staffed police department. And I urge you to let us vote on whether or not we want a 1%, sales tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wally Waldau. I won't talk about the sales tax. I'm chair of the Lompoc March for Our Lives group. Part of our mission is to keep the conversation going about how to reduce or eliminate gun violence in our schools and in our community. Toward that end, we sponsor a scholarship to a deserving student from one of the local high schools. The scholarship application includes an essay on how to best reduce gun violence in the schools. We were also a sponsor of the AAUW Speech Trip competition where the topic this year involved reduction of violence in the schools. Last year, we joined, Lompoc joined, over 800 communities around the world in marching against gun violence in the schools. Our local march was led by students from the Lompoc High Schools and one of our middle schools. In view of what we are all about, we find it utterly irresponsible for one of our elected city council members to advocate or encourage even ingest unlawful activity by our kids and their four-wheel-drive vehicles, activity that borders on vigilante violence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Frank Signrilli, native and resident of Lompoc Valley for over 82 years. Based on that statement, you know, I've seen a few changes. We have heard from our staff that we do need help from the police at the police department and fire department, and that's very true. I can recall back before we had radios for police cars, and there were probably two police cars, maybe three officers, and so when there was a, and the headquarters was near the Lompoc Theater. So if there was a problem that they had to come back in an emergency, they would flip the switch that would turn on a red light on top of the Lilly Building. And that time, it was the Bank of America. So they'd come running in and as fast as they could, get the information, go out and take care of things. Well, that worked fine then when there were only 3,000 or 4,000 people. Where are we today? A lot more than that. We have the radios now, and, but we need the help, and the 1 cent sales tax is the way to go from what I've heard. So I don't think bringing back the red light will solve the problem. So, so give us a chance to vote. Get the people that voted you into those seats, let you know what we want, and I think you probably know what we want. I know you can't do it yourself. It's not legal, but a vote from the people will make it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is Terry Doutney, and I'm here to speak for the city sales tax. If we increase our sales tax by 1% to pay for city services such as road repair and public safety personnel, that's only $1 for every $100 we spend in town. The city is already spending this money, but is using savings to pay for it today. The most recent proposal to pay for this spending is pay cuts to positions that are already underfunded and we can't fill anyway because we don't pay a living wage. Low-income families won't, who don't spend much, won't pay much. Higher-income families who have more to spend will pay a little more. Visitors who pass through town will also help us pay for these services. That is only $1 for every $100 spent in town. I believe our city deserves this increase. We need to invest in our city if we want to keep the services we have today. We currently pay 7.75% on every dollar for state and county taxes. Count state and county services. That works out to $7.75 for every $100 we spend in town. Adding $1 won't break any budget. We need to invest in our city and our children if we want to make this city better. I love Lompoc and want to keep it a city I'm proud to call home. I want the option to vote for a 1% city sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Judy McKinnon. I've been a resident of Lompoc for well over 40 years, and I chose to come here after spending six months here years before. I came because it was a lovely little city. It was well-maintained. We had adequate police and fire protection. We had adequate maintenance of our streets, our own city streets, and of our parks and other areas in the town, and we are losing those every day because apparently it's just too much to consider that the people in Lompoc might actually choose to pay a measly penny per dollar sales tax. And I think it's time that you took that decision, that you took away from us and you give it back. Let us vote on that 1 cent sales tax or watch the city go bankrupt. Maybe that's what you're aiming for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Travis Border. I'm an employee of the city of Lompoc Electric Department. I'd like to make it clear, I'm not speaking for the city or the union. I believe I talked to council in September to let you know about my problem with the electric department, how short-staffed we were, how we're losing people to other companies, how people are retiring. I did an interview with KCOY, let them know the dire need of more linemen that we need, how we're the lowest-paid in California, we keep losing people to other places. Well, since October, we've lost two more people. We haven't filled any positions. Position's been open for years, can't hire anybody on the salary. Just going to let you know, we keep losing people. It's not going to, it's not going to work. And I know the big topics all focused on the general fund and how we need to help police and fire, and I understand, I agree, we should get a 1% tax going, but as, as far as the enterprise fund goes and every other department, I believe the utilities are down like 30-some employees too. And that's not coming out of the general fund, so what's the excuse for not paying the other employees? What's the excuse for not paying the water or electric or sewer what they deserve? We can't do any more furloughs. If furloughs happen or anything else happens, you're going to lose all your skilled employees. They're not easy to come by. You're not going to have anybody to run your city. I just want to give you a warning. That's about all I can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Howard. I'm a resident and voter in Lompoc, and I'm speaking in support of putting the 1% sales tax on the ballot for the citizens to vote. And I want to talk about the herd of elephants in the room that nobody else has talked about, and that is that our city manager and our budget manager have talked about in two or three budget cycles, the city will reach a point of no return with calpers if we are not able to pay on the principal, and now we are only paying interest. That is increasing, and the principal is increasing. And your plan now is not going to do one thing for calpers. So please help us bail the city out and listen to your highly-paid experts on how to bail the city out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Justin Rouge, a retired senior citizen here in Lompoc, and I've been about 25 years. As a retired senior citizen, I am very interested in the future of the city I've been in. What I see happening is we had a very well-run city financially until we got hit over the head by calpers and a $70 million bill. We can't pay this bill by nickel and diming ourselves out of our budget hearings. This is just... This is just not going to work. We need millions of dollars, not thousands of dollars, and we need to get those dollars going now. And the only way we're going to do it is by passing a sales tax. And the sales tax is the same sales tax that everybody in the county has passed to solve this very problem. Now you folks up there, all five of you, need to get together and put the sales tax on the ballot in March. And we will then have a chance for all of us to vote on this, as they have in all the other communities around here. We need a 50% vote plus one to pass the sales tax. That's a general sales tax. And a sales tax is a world of difference from a property tax, or a school bond, or any of those things. They're just not the same thing, and it will pass here if you folks get out and are active in passing it, just as it has in Santa Maria and everywhere else. We need your help to go do it. All five of you got to get together and do it right now. It's not the future. You can't redesign the city to try to solve this problem. We need millions now. And I'm wondering, if you're not listening to the city residents, how many of you out here are interested in this sales tax? Put up your hands, come on, all of you. We have a big show here tonight. This is outstanding for this city, very solemn as it happened that people get so involved and want something. And the reason we want it is to protect our city and not cut back on police and fire and road services and all that. In addition, do we have to pay this terrible bill? So we need all five of you to stand together and come out in a proactive way to promote this sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rosemary Holmes, a long-term resident. And I just wanted to add, Justin Rouget has pretty much said what I was going to say, but you know, if this many people come out, and this many people are in favor of putting this on the ballot, it's probably a good idea. We rarely get this kind of turnout. And really, putting this on the ballot will be democracy in action, and it's so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert McKee. I just wanted to come and thank you guys this evening. We received our permit for cannabis last Monday, and just wanted to thank you guys for all your hard work, and the city manager, and thank you guys so much. That's all.
Good evening, council members, members of the public. There are many people here tonight that care about Lompoc, people that have different opinions. You know, outside earlier today, there was a protest for people that want to have a chance to vote, and I respect that. You should have a right to vote. You should have a right to have what you say, right? My problem is, that I have with this, is that this is going to the general fund, which means that the people behind me are going to make the decisions on what it is that they're going to spend that money on. We're told that, yeah, we need police officers, we have low morale, there's not enough money. But you know, last November, there was taxes that were placed on the ballot, taxes which passed with 75% of the voters. Yet, I don't understand why the city continues to kick itself in the ass. We've got these taxes, we've got 26 businesses lined up to come into the city. 26 businesses that collect not one tax, not two tax, but three tax revenues. Your sales tax, your cannabis special 6% retail tax, and your state 15% excise tax. That means that people in the city got to do some work. They got to file for grants, they got to ask for money, they got to get the kickbacks that we deserve because we legalized cannabis. Yet, here we are, 14 months after accepting cannabis applications, and one business is open, collecting taxes. Councilman Mosby, you asked somebody here, I can't remember exactly who, for a little insight as to what cannabis is doing. And although we can't get specific numbers because there's one business, you were told that that number was very significant. That's what you were told by the city staff. So would it be irresponsible if I held a community dinner, and we had 26 trucks of food that showed up, and I opened one truck and looked inside and said, "Oh, this isn't enough. We don't have enough food to feed everybody." How irresponsible would it be for me not to look at those other 25 trucks lined up with food before I ask, "Get some more food trucks in here"? And that's what we're doing. You have a source of revenue. You have a way to pay off some of these things, a significant amount. But yet, your focus is continuing to work to ask us to give you more money, not to open the businesses, not to be business-friendly, not to go out of your way to help these businesses, but to put up roadblocks, to say that you don't offer consultation, to say that you can't do this or you can't do that, yet on the city manager's report, you put consultation. Stop kicking yourself in the ass. We can do this.
Nick Nikelenko, resident of Lompoc. I'm here to speak my opposition to this tax because we're taxed enough already in Lompoc. We're paying off bonds, we're paying off measures. I believe we have five bonds that the citizens of Lompoc are still paying off. People come to Lompoc because it's reasonably priced, so we should keep it that way. And as the fellow before me, Joe, said, we need to be more welcoming to businesses that want to come to Lompoc before we pass the buck to the citizens. We cannot ask our citizens to pay more when we're not doing anything to solve the issue before coming to them. Thank you very much.
Good evening, City Council. Jane Dewis, longtime, over 30-year resident of Lompoc, California. Cannabis is not food. Food we need, cannabis we do not. That was another thing that the citizens of Lompoc were not allowed to vote on, whether or not we wanted unlimited cannabis stores within our city limits. We were not allowed to vote on that. So maybe some of us out here tonight don't want 26 new cannabis facilities in the city of Lompoc, the cannabis capital of the central coast. Maybe some of us would rather pay a penny on a dollar rather than have so much cannabis in this community. And the thing is, we need to be allowed to vote on this. Let it be our decision. If we vote it down, then so be it. You can do what you need to do. But if we vote for it, we have handed you a solution to this problem that the majority of the people in this community are willing to do. We need to have the right to vote. Look at all of these people. Why are you denying them? What is it in it for you that by you telling us we can't vote, what does that do for you? Because I don't understand, as a member, as a citizen of the United States, citizen of California, citizen of Lompoc, I do not understand why I am not given a right, a basic right, the right to vote on what happens to my community, to my life, to my children, my family all live in this town. We don't need more cannabis to pay for services. That's not what we need. We need to be able to vote and decide for ourselves what we want to do with this town. Let us vote.
Yes, Councilwoman Holndoll, citizen since the 50s in the Lompoc Valley, because I started in the county. And the interesting thing we're hearing tonight is that they just want a chance to vote on it. We don't want just three people telling us we can have something and can't have it. That's getting the saddest part of it, is that you don't give us a chance to vote. That's what you're hearing tonight. They said, "Let us vote on it." We're not saying we're going to vote for or against it, but basically, it sounds that way. But the idea that you need to let the citizens of Lompoc have the right to vote on this to keep the fire department, police department. As you drive down the middle of town, you've got people speeding down streets, sideways, and everything else, because we don't have enough police officers on the road. It's not their fault, it's our, it's the council's fault. You just don't have the money. And you, for some reason, you don't want them to vote on it. Why are you the ones wanting to make that final decision? So I think about it. Are you?
John Lynn Lompoc President. I'm going to change the subject. I want to talk about, one more time, why our well water is getting saltier. And I realize, compared to a tax increase, it may be a little less exciting. So page one of the document that I'm giving you is a report from our water department that shows the total dissolved solids in our well water now sits at 1162, called salinity in the report that follows. Page number two is the cover of the report that I've pulled some pages out of, and if anyone would like to read the whole report, I'd be happy to crank out all 400 pages of it so you can read through it. Page number three shows the average salinity in city wells from 1952 to 1961, before Kachuma had an impact, which was 903. Page four shows the increase in salinity wells from 1960 to 1995, so from 900 to 1,055. Page five, the black line, was what was supposed to happen to the salinity when the new release plan for Kachuma began, and to bring it back down from 950. Unfortunately, the red line, not my best art, shows you what did happen. It went up another 262 points. Page six shows the cumulative cost to Lompoc ratepayers for the increase in salinity in our water up through 1994 at $3.5 million. Page seven shows what everybody thought was going to happen when the salinity went down because the treatment process was, or the process of bringing Kachuma water to Lompoc was changed. Instead of it dropping to $1.3 million, my guesstimate is that we've increased our costs to between $4.6 and $6.1 million. That means every ratepayer in Lompoc had to make that up. Now, having read this and a number of other documents, there are three potential causes. Number one, the water from Kachuma is saltier than they said it was going to be. Number two, the salt in the tributary rivers feeding us is higher than they thought it was going to be. Or number three, the higher salinity effluent from the Mission Hills Community Service District, which we've just learned enters our aquifer, is having an effect, or more probably, something of all of those. Now, there's a board hearing coming up, and I would urge you to take some action because the time is very short. Thank you.
My name's Anne Rouget, a member of the community and past council member. I know it's a hard choice, but you've got to let us vote on this 1% sales tax. A member of the council called a friend of mine and told her we didn't need the 1% sales tax, which was very interesting to me, because nobody calls me and talks to me about letters I write, or my husband. But anyway, this room is full of people that want the right to vote, and you've got to think of the greater good for this community. That's your job. These are your constituents. These are people who voted for you, and you have got to honor their choices. That's, it's just as clear as day. We're going to go through this again next Wednesday, another budget hearing. And it's going to take all five of you to agree on this. But for the life of me, I can't figure out why some of you are digging your heels in and refusing to give us the choice. Give us the choice. It's a democracy here in this country, and in Lompoc. The city manager went to Economic Development, no, it's, anyway, I used to go to those, about the economics of the county, and the north county especially, and how to be, how to grow your city. Do you think anybody's going to want to live here when we're in such a big, dark, deep hole? I don't think so. And when you're, we're short of staff, we're all, through all the whole departments, and laying off people isn't the answer, writing grants isn't the answer, because those run out eventually. So you have, to me, it's as clear as the nose on my face that this is what you need to do. This is your obligation to the, to us, the citizens of Lompoc. Please, please do this. Give us the right to vote.
The answer, the one gentleman back there, cannabis ain't the answer. It's part of the answer. I just did quick math back there. Each one of them stores would have to make $13 million a year at 6% tax to pay just the CalPERS. But that portion's necessary. But a sales tax is also necessary. So I say, put it on the measure to vote, and to make it easier to open a business, simply. Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. Chief, this is just a prop. So the question tonight is, axe the tax, or tax the axe? So I'm glad to see everybody here. I think democracy runs the greatest when everybody participates. That being said, three years ago, I stood before a council made up of a very different bunch of people, except for a few of you, and I brought a report, and I petitioned that you should evaluate your resources because of the CalPERS performance. I was summarily dismissed and no attention paid. The tax, if you decide to have a tax, is not going to be enough. Over the last several weeks and month, I've heard that we need a new fire station, we need a new police station, we need new fire equipment, we need new police equipment. IBW Electrical wants a 25% raise for their workers. The non-IBW Electrical workers want raises. We need improvements all around, to our roads, to our parks. So please, I'm going to petition again, don't be disillusioned that a tax, the 1 cent tax is going to be the answer to everything. You're going to need to do a lot more. I would like to see you seriously look into the budget and see what you can do to constrain, because if you don't constrain a little bit, even if you pass the tax, you're going to find yourself in the same position very shortly. You have several methodologies that you're using for generating income right now. One specifically is the enterprise. Our current city manager came from Oxnard. The same firm that we used for the methodology was litigated and lost. So you may be losing a lot more income than you think. You really have to get down and dirty, look at what the core problem is, and not only look at the tax, but you need to start evaluating some of the other methodologies that you're using to generate the income, because of using to generate the income because if any of those fail in litigation, the city's going to fail. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ed Tinoco. I'm a rep for IBW 1245. And let me just give some numbers. I know Nick talks about IBW General Fund, but the fact is that we have 170 employees that are IBW 1245. Out of that, a total of about 7%, 7.5% are General Fund employees. We are supporting the 1%. We're not telling you guys to vote for it. We want you guys to give us the right to vote for it, and this is going to benefit safety. Not us, but safety. We're missing five employees in the urban forestry division. That's half. Six in streets. That's about 40%. Three in parks. That's about 30%. One in rec. Warehouse, we're missing one. Four in the electric. Three lineman, one substation. They're operating at the substation with two individuals who are on call every other week. Right now, we have a crew of seven people because we're unable to have two different crews in the electric. Customs service, we're missing one. Fleet, we're missing two mechanics. Landfield, we're missing one. Water treatment plant, we're missing two operators out of five. Wastewater treatment plant, we're missing two operators out of five, out of six. One is a trainee, so in reality, you're working with three operators on a 24-hour cycle. Legally, you're not going to be able to do it in probably two weeks because they're not going to be able to work 24/7 all the time. It's against the law. The water division is missing one meter reader, I mean, one meter tech and one distribution worker. So we're missing about 30 employees in the... In our unit. That's big, big numbers, okay? What we want is the 1%, so you guys can help safety. And we're not asking you guys to vote for it, but like I said, you guys give us the right. That's it. This is a democracy, and most of the people here, that's what they want. Thank you.
Hi, Leah Braitman, Lompoc. And I didn't really write anything, but it just seems like it's usually us tax and spend liberals that are asking for a tax increase, but it's Republicans too. Everybody tonight is asking for a tax increase. At least let us vote on it. I mean, I never thought I would agree with the Rougetes, but at least put it on the ballot, you know? Let us... Let us at least vote on it. And then the second thing I wanted to say, very disappointing councilmember Starbucks comments during the April 17 budget workshop. It's just, there's like God right here, and that was just not a nice thing to say about homeless people. They should be ministered to, not used as target practice. So I hope you've thought about your words. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, I will close the oral communications and move back to agenda item number eight. City Council appointment of alternate members, being city staff, to the Northern California Power Agency, NCPA, and the Transmission Agency of Northern California Tank. The proposed alternate staff members for NCPA are Dean Albro and James Throop, and the Tank alternate commissioner member would be Brad Wilkie. Any discussion? Any questions? If you support it, may I have a motion? Councilmember Vega? Oh, I think you voted. There you go.
I think that our current finance manager should be the alternate. Did you make a motion or a proposal here?
So I'm saying that their staff recommended this, and one of the reasons, having been a member of NCPA, the number of meetings that are required and the trip that is required to actually physically be present, the... Having two alternates from staff is helpful. So rather than making it just one, staff is recommending two as a way to make it feasible to always have somebody present, whether it's myself or one of the other staff members.
How does the alternate work?
So the alternate works if I'm unavailable to attend, then it goes to one of the next alternates to see if they're available to attend. And the NCPA meetings require us to be present. It's not a meeting that we can phone call into. So that is a drive all the way to Roseville or Lodi to do those meetings.
Is it not odd to have a staff alternate outside of a council?
It's not odd at all. It's historical. It's actually required. They require us to have both a council representation and a staff representation.
But we've never had two alternates before.
I'm sure we have in the past. I think it's... Wouldn't be suggested if we hadn't. And so again, because of the number of meetings, every month, there's a meeting, and whether I can make it or one of the staff can make it or council member, Mosby, who's the council alternate. So again, having a staff appointee and a staff alternate isn't a bad solution to trying to make all of these meetings.
I'm going to withdraw my motion right now. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Brad?
All I was going to add was, one of the requirements for having access to the funds that are held at NCPA, that are city funds, is to be an alternate. So for my whole entire career as finance director, the finance director was an alternate, was an additional alternate to allow that function as a treasurer to have access and control over the funds of the city.
Thank you for that improved explanation. So it is standard to have two staff alternates, one being the utility alternate and one being the financial alternate from the staff level. So I will support the recommendation. If I could get a second on that?
I'll give you a second.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0, so we now have fully appointed alternates for those two organizations. Thank you. The public hearing item number nine is adoption of resolution number 6249-19, accepting the final map improvement securities and subdivision improvement agreement for subdivision LOM 594, otherwise known as Summit View Homes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mike Luther, Public Works Director, will be handling this item. So I won't repeat what you just repeated, which was the title and what we're doing tonight, but I'll just point out some of the previous actions that have taken place on this project. This is Summit View Homes, the 44 homes up at the corner of the Y. It was annexed into the city in 2016. It has council approved the development agreement. We've approved a vesting and a tentative subdivision map, a development plan, and a community services district for the project. So the developer has submitted the appropriate subdivision map, the final map, along with all of the required documentation. So council is now asked to hold a public hearing, consider any comments received, and consider adoption of resolution 6249-19. And I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Do any of the council members have questions for Mr. Luther?
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know this for certain, but I believe that we have a council member that might live within 500 feet of this project. Councilmember Cordova, do you? Okay, then we need to have Councilmember Cordova step down from the dais right now and not participate in the discussion or the vote.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open to public comment on this matter. Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion on the floor to accept?
Sorry.
Councilmember Vega?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 6249-19, accepting the final map and improvement securities and subdivision improvement agreement for subdivision Lompoc 594, Summit View Homes.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 4-0 and 0. Councilmember Cordova, you may now return. Item number 10, adoption of resolution number 625319, approving a declaration of nuances and abatement order for weeds and debris. And that will be presented by Battalion Chief Fire Marshal Dina Paskey.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, city staff, and citizens. Every year, we come to you with a weed abatement program. It's part of the government code and one of the ways we try and make our community more resilient from wildfire. We've had several fires threaten our town in the past. Rucker, Magalito, even the Canyon Fire was very visible from the base. What we're seeing is some climatic changes and things that really cause us some concerns. I did tour Paradise, California, and it's six months later and they're still in ash. So that threat is real. So I wanted to express our concerns, but we're here tonight. How do we mitigate that? So one of the risks we have is large lots that have weeds or dead grass. We've had some real late rainfall. We're very lucky that our aquifer's getting more water this year, but it also causes the weeds to grow. Perhaps people have already mowed and then it regrows, so we're in kind of that state of flux. We did wait a little bit later here. Our mowing deadline is June 1st this year to try and accommodate. I mean, we had rain even this last week, just some measurable rain. So pursuant to that, we're trying to get council direction. We do have a resolution that has been prepared for you, and we're looking for essentially the ones that don't really want to follow the rules. Last year, I had to force one large lot, and out of the big list that I have, when I only have to do it to one lot, what we're doing, partnering with our community, is working. So just because we have someone's name up here on a list doesn't mean it's automatically going to force. We just have to have that in case we get to a point that we need to make sure our city's safe within our boundaries. And finally, I just want to say this is more of a proactive approach. We're not here to make anybody, you know, we're not the lawn mowing police. We're just trying to isolate some fuels and get people to at least mow down their lots about this time of year, right before our grasses cure out. So remember, the grasses are light flashy fuels. And you think, okay, well, what's this one lot here? Well, a lot of these communities that were lost were lost by firebrands that actually entered the communities from other communities that traveled mile, two miles, unprecedented lengths. So we have, if we have a receptive ignition source, a fuel bed here in our town, we actually could burn down home from a fire that's not even burning in our community. So that's what we're really trying to mitigate. And I'm available if any council has any questions.
Councilmember Vega?
Dina, what you're saying is there's some gray area that you're willing to work with on some of these projects or some of these lots, even though you're asking us to approve moving forward with the abatement program? Because of the rains and stuff, does that give you a little... Does it give you a little leeway? Is that what's happening with the negotiation of the cleanup?
I'm not familiar with the term gray area. What we do...
Well, you have some... Let me say... Let me clear this up, okay? You have a parameter from what you work with, which you can actually use litigation or work with the homeowner for the abatement process.
Absolutely. In fact, the only one that we had to force abate, if you will, with our contractor last year, when I look at what the status of that property was, their taxes are back due over five years, which tells me it's probably going to go to foreclosure. So there was a circumstance, I just couldn't connect with anyone because they didn't have any desire to do so. So yeah, it...
So what happens with the project... Process, if I could ask, if there is a hardship that you note and you cannot abate it, does it go to a bank or where does the bill go?
So there is a... In the government code, it does allow there to be a teeter program, so that plan would put it on the next round of taxes, property taxes.
She'd put a lien on it.
Yeah. It is like, much like a construction lien, if somebody didn't pay for their construction, they put a lien to ensure that they get their money back. And we do nominal costs. We have a local contractor that performs the work here, so we hire local, form local. And last year, we only had to do that once, so in our list, that's pretty... That's as close as we get to being pretty spot on.
Once you notice that a property's in default or in foreclosure process, I mean, is there an effort made to contact the lender of record or do you not get that far because it's not foreclosed yet actually?
Well, in that one example, it's not foreclosed yet, so it's not bank owned. It's still... And that particular example, possibly why it's taking longer for it to foreclose, it's a large blank parcel lot, so open land isn't as desirable for perhaps a bank to take it back over.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you. We will open this up for public comment. Seeing no one rise, we will close public comment. Is there a motion by council? Councilmember Cordova?
I'll motion to accept the adoption of resolution number 6253-19.
And I'll second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Do we have any written communications? No written communications. We will now open the floor for our last oral communication on city matters of two minutes. If there's any additional comments anyone would like to make.
Sandy Healy, resident of Lompoc for 53 years. Just want to... It's a feel-good story. I was walking about a week ago, and there were two of our residents, like the husband was here tonight, who go around with bags and pick up trash everywhere. They take their bag when they... And this was on Laurel and E, where they each had huge bag that I could see through. And I said, "Why are you doing this?" "Well, we want to clean up Lompoc." And if we all took that and did that, how much better would the city look?
Thank you. And their names are Carl and Elena Jones.
Yes? Do you see them?
Yes. So we'll close oral communications, and we'll bring it back to council for comments and meeting reports, and we'll begin with Councilmember Vega.
I attended National Prayer Day, which I really applaud the people that put that on. It was really a nice, nice event. I did attend the economic forecast meeting this morning for North County at Allen Hancock College. And I do have a council request. I actually have two council requests, and I think that moving forward here, I think we had a comment on the riverbed, and I think because of the cooperation with the county and/or lack of participation on a funding mechanism side, I'd like to do a council request on pursuing the thought process and moving forward of annexation of the riverbed. I think that Lompoc needs to move forward and take responsibility for what it's paying for. I think that it's time that we, instead of having that gray area where the sheriff's department and the county are policing it and making money on that side, so maybe we could get the city manager to comment if that's possible.
Yes, Councilmember Vega, we already are moving towards that.
Yes, Councilmember Vega, we already are moving towards that. When I talked to our planning manager, he said it was going to run to bring in all of the properties along the riverbed, and there's a couple others that are off somewhere else, to bring those all into the city. It's, it's about a $50,000 cost. So we're trying to get through the budget first and then sort of see how we can finance that part of it. But I do agree, that was something we talked about earlier, so I'm glad you were in agreement with trying to just get whatever is owned by the city into the city proper.
That's one council request. Do we have to move forward with that with a three votes to move this forward? Or before I go to the next one?
I was already planning to do it, so.
You already, okay.
I believe since staff has already been planning to move forward and bring it back to us, that-
Okay, I didn't know that, so I had to ask. Okay. So I'm gonna ask a second thing here. On the next meeting, I was, I was gonna ask that we can bring back the agenda item that was a council request for additional funding for the down payment assistance program. I understand we're going through the budget process and there's, process and there's staffing issue, but there's allocating that money for that project in the future, whether it's a third party running that program, or if it's city staff. But I like that, those funds allocated. So if we could bring that back so that we can at least get to talk about it and allocate those funds, additional funds toward the down payment assistance program that we previously had.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I sat on the ad hoc with Councilmember Vega and city staff on that, and there are several million dollars available for allocation. And some of that, I know as a percentage, can go back to staff for time, so I'll definitely give you a second on that one.
Do we have a third?
I have a third.
You have your third. Is the request clear?
If I could ask city manager, is that something we can do also?
Yes, I will, I'll talk with the staff that deal with that part of it, just to see.
Should be easy to bring it back, right?
Sorry?
Should be easy to bring it back, right?
Yeah, I just, I need to do a little bit of research just to find out. I know we're down, last count was six people in that area, so.
And I wanted to do it without the staffing issue. We just want the funds allocated so another entity doesn't come and claim those funds.
Right. No, I, I'll, I'll bring it back, but it'll discuss how they can do it, who can do it.
Yeah, and, and like I say, well, that's a separate discussion that we can have with a third party. I think that's what we're probably, we probably should have that discussion as far as who can actually man that project, because we don't have the staff right now at the time. I get it.
So part of the request that I heard Councilmember Vega make was next meeting. I'm hearing from you that it's not the next meeting.
No, I don't think I can get it for the next.
But as soon as you possibly can.
We'd already have to have it done by Friday, otherwise I'm gonna have my city clerk mad at me again.
Okay. And the reason I did this, because I had a previous council request and it hasn't come back, and I don't want to stalemate it just because of the budget and because of the staffing level. The allocation of funds is so important.
It is, but when I don't have available staff, it's tough to find someone to do that report. So we are working on it, and I will do my best to get that as soon as possible.
Okay. Hopefully, maybe in the next two, two meetings?
I will, yeah, I'll talk to the manager tomorrow and see how-
I thought you were the manager, sir.
I'm sorry?
You're the city manager, right?
The manager of that area.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cordova?
I attended the meeting with Assemblyman Cunningham, the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, EDC's Pathway to Preparedness, Allen Hancock College twentieth year anniversary, hosted and participated in the AETC Civic Leader Group Tour of the 381st, attended and participated in the National Day of Prayer at City Hall. I actually have a council request that I kind of came up with on this particular meeting. Since I've been on the dais, I've kind of heard back and forth in regards to the quality of our water or the salinity in the water of our aquifer. And so I just think that, I don't know if it's possible for us to be able to review that deterioration and kind of try to get to the bottom of where that is actually coming from, maybe working with the Regional Water Control Board and seeing if that is a possibility, and determine the mitigation steps or levels that we need to take. Otherwise, I just feel like it's just gonna continue to get worse, and we don't really know. Nobody's really saying where that's coming from.
I'm gonna look at Mr. Wilkie sitting in front of me to see if he can have his staff bring that back. He just said yes. Any time, what do you think? Okay, well, we'll work on the time for that one.
So do we need additional?
Your staff is going to initiate the item. We don't need to have three votes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mosby?
Just a couple items real quick. One, a group of people coming up asking earlier today about a tax measure and discussion, just making a comment on that. What we've asked for as a council is to move forward with the budget without a tax measure, because it is money that probably wouldn't be there, and if it is there, it's way down the road. So we've asked the council, we've asked the, the city manager to move forward without a tax measure anticipated. So we did actually, in fact, I made a motion to bring back next April discussion on a tax measure. So it's still on the tip of our tongues, but understand what we are trying to do right now is to move forward with the money that we have and understand what we can do. That's one comment. The other thing is, I, last year, we had a discussion about the tennis courts and how important they were to the group of people who play tennis. And the nonprofit that came and used Ryan Park last year did damage the tennis courts, or allegedly, and I guess it didn't get fixed. But the group did approach me, and I've been assured by staff that they're gonna use different measures, so I just wanted to get that out there publicly, that we're gonna do what we can to protect, and they are looking into fixing the damages that happened last year. So that, there's a group of about a hundred of them, and they're very protective of those tennis courts. The, the other item I was asking for was a vacancy list on staffing. I don't know if I need to make a council request to get that list. The last one that we had was eight, nine months ago that we got?
The finance director is currently working on it, if he's-
Yeah, we can provide one for you.
Okay, I think it's important-
Can I comment on Mr. Vega's comment earlier about the funding? Last budget cycle, we put money and earmarked it. There's no reason why we couldn't do that this time in, in for the loan program. We can, we'll, there's no reason why we can't put some, something in the budget as a placeholder.
So, so we'll take that as input as part of the other discussion when it comes back?
We'll, we'll bring all that back.
And then, um-
I just wanted to let you know that there's, there's no holdup. We could, we could actually earmark that in the budget and we could do all the necessary requirements as we go through.
So that money, if I could respond?
Sure.
Yeah, so the money won't go elsewhere in the meantime, is what we're saying.
Yeah, well, we can put it in the budget like we did last time, and then we could work on bringing back, you know, a resolution that you can move forward with it, so.
So it would, it would control it, so it wouldn't go anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mosby, did you get a satisfactory answer from the vacancy list being returned?
I did, right? Okay. And lastly, I want to thank staff for putting, you know, the, the balance sheets forward for us, but, you know, we, we are still only on February so to let people know what the monies are that are out there and stuff. I know they're working hard to get the numbers together, but I appreciate you guys doing that and getting them out there. People wanna look at what our funding situations are. They, is a public document, or I usually have them with me somewhere. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I'd like to make the public aware that the California Coastal Commission, and I'm gonna read the notice of their public hearing. "It's a consistency determination by the Department of the Air Force for a five-year 2019 to 2023 beach management plan regarding endangered species protection and public access at Vandenberg Air Force Base, Santa Barbara County. This hearing by the Coastal Commission is gonna be held Thursday, May 9th, at 9:00 a.m. in the Oxnard City Council Chamber." So just to let the public know that if you wanna try and get your beach back, that might be somewhere to go.
Thank you.
Real, Mayor, real quick, and just, just in, to reply that too, we have a letter that we're getting ready to send out to, you know, as a response from the city, but it would be good to have other people, if they can attend that meeting, to discuss it. And it, in the letter, it's, it's a couple pages long, just discuss the snowy plover and the impacts it's had financially and other parts of the, the city on, on the city with the closure and people not being able to go there, the tourism not being able to go there, the businesses being less profitable because they can't sell the fishing equipment and whatever else. So, so we are responding to them with an official letter also.
Thank you.
I attended the SB CAG orientation meeting, the Vandenberg Air Force Base First Quarter Award Ceremony, the job fair that was held by the local workforce, the EDC pathways breakfast and presentation, and that was well done, highlighting some of the pathways some of our students have towards learning before they graduate, and the Human Service Commission, and the Economic Forecast. And then last week, I was representing the city in DC at the NCPA, the Northern California Power Agency Federal Policy Conference. We are members of that. That is how we provide electrical at a much lower rate than PG&E. This annual federal conference is both elected and utility directors attending and meeting with are elected and different committees and organizations that make decisions at the federal level that impact our ability to provide services. So I was able to participate in meetings with our local representation from Carver Hall to Feinstein to Harris, as well as the Bureau of Land Management Forest Services, the ag agencies, and, and other committee groups that make these decisions. The key points, talking points that we discussed, I think it's important for our communities to know what we were advocating for and the concerns, first was the motion and ordinance that we put forward at the last meeting regarding the 5G on every pole. That was a mandate that came down from the FCC. It is a burden on all communities because we lose local control. So we are advocating to the federal decision makers to make a change to that. There is a congressional bill that is being presented on that, and there will be a Senate bill to match that, to change that, and bring back hopefully local control to that. We also advocated for the wildfire cleanup afterwards. There are, many of the fires that happened north of us that we supported impacted our fellow memberships in, in NCPA. And they are still not seeing the federal lands remove much of what is matchsticks for a fire, and they are on that urban interface. And so we were there to advocate, to have the Bureau of Land Management and the Forest Service Agency act much, much quicker. They've been given the funds, they haven't acted on it, and they haven't gotten to the actual level of getting the work done. They're still talking theory and having meetings. And so the, it was really to advocate, start doing this because that's, we're back in high fire season. Fire season now is 24/7, year-round, but to have those matchsticks waiting and being fueled is dangerous. And then the last thing was a concern regarding, PG&E now has its mandate, and so does SoCal Edison, that if there's a high wind incident and they choose to turn the power off, it turns the power off the entire grid. And our power is delivered through PG&E's grid to many of us in the NCPA organization. That's fine. We understand high fire and high wind risks, and turning it off to prevent that is great. The sad part of that is it can take two to three days to turn that power back on because of the mandate that they have to go out and check every line that might have been affected, and they don't have enough personnel and don't have MOUs and partnerships in place to allow those of us that are partners with them to send personnel out to help and assist. So again, it was advocating for things that we know can make our partnerships more efficient and prevent that long-term outage potentially on us or those additional large fires. So it was an important event to attend and represent as part of that organization, because again, that's a benefit that our community has that others around us don't, is controlling our own electrical delivery and power source. So I, I just wanted to say that I, I took advantage of that and tried to make those connections for our community. That being said, I was, it was unfortunate. I couldn't attend the red, white, and blue ball. That was supporting the fallen warriors because I was out of town and didn't make it back. So thank you to that organization for continuing to have your fundraisers and to support the Fallen Warrior Memorial. We really appreciate it. There are several events I want you to know about that are going on between now and when we have our next meeting. We have a Boys and Girls Community Walk this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. It will be at 600 West Ocean, and we will walk through the neighborhood that has been affected by the recent violence. Those in the community that want to show support and show support to our police department and to those being affected by that violence, please meet me with the Boys and Girls Club leadership and our police department to do that neighborhood walk on Saturday at 11:00 at 600 West Ocean. This is National Small Business Week. If I'd had a proclamation, I'd have read it. There are a few businesses locally that are putting something on, and I, I wanna say thank you to them for continuing to do that, even though the chamber didn't do the week this year. And that's The Bookstore, Just Too Sweet Candies, Lompoc Valley Florists, and Surf Connections. So again, it's small business. It's what really keeps our community vibrant. So go out and support them for being present and doing those things. We have a senior expo on Friday, May 17th, from 9:00 to noon at the Dewey Center. Please attend and find out how to support the seniors in their lives. If you're a senior and you need assistance, attend and find out the information. Again, that's Friday, May 17th, from 9:00 to noon at the Dewey Center. And then the following day, on Saturday, May 18th, is the Reli for Life Event. So it's a really great fundraiser for cancer treatments and survivors to be supportive of each other, so please go out and do that. And last but not least, Happy Mother's Day this weekend. You know, we all have them, we've all needed them, and we all still need them. So thank you to all of the hardworking women in our lives that are great examples to us. We will adjourn this meeting till the Lompoc City Council of Regular Meeting of 6:30 p.m. on May 21st, 2019, but I better see you all here on May 15th for the special budget meeting, 6:30. Thank you.